We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session from Monday, February the first, two thousand twenty-one to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here.
If you will, please let us stand together as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the name of God, in the name of liberty, and of justice.
Loving God, you are author of life and origin of all created things. We ask that your grace and blessing be bestowed upon the men and women who have been called to serve our county on this Board of Commissioners. Help them to represent their constituents wisely with an eye towards safeguarding the deeper truths of human life that come only from you. Bless the people that they represent. Bless our country and our county. Help our Commissioners to make decisions that will uphold the values of peace and justice in our land and throughout the world. We ask this in God's name. Amen.
Commissioners, this evening, as you see, we have one of our Commissioners that are joining us by telephone, and so there, we will have to accommodate for that, and I ask you to please work with us as we try to do that. Also, in our agenda this day, before we approve it, I do want to add under, as a two C, a Chairman's privilege, to have an update from our Health Director, Mr. Scott Harrelson. Are there any items to add or take away from the agenda this evening? If there are none, do I have a motion that the agenda be approved?
It's approved, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If there are none, all in favor, six to five, say an aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion passed, thank you. Next is the petition of citizens. Mr. Vice Chair?
We have no citizens that have requested to speak tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Next would be the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the January fourth, two thousand twenty-one meeting and the January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular session. You also have the tax releases and refunds. Are there any items to pull? If there are none, do I have a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If there are none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Scott Harrelson, our Health Director, if he will come and give us an update. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, everyone.
Hope you're doing well.
Doing well. Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing me this time to give you an update. I know there are a lot of questions in the community, so it's good to get the latest and accurate information out there. We have seen an increase, probably the earlier part of the month of January, I think January fourth was the case spike for the state of North Carolina. North Carolina had over ninety, was averaging over ninety cases a day. We never really got that high here, but we got close. We were over eighty cases a day. And today, we are in the mid-fifties. So, still a lot of activity, a lot of COVID activity in our county, but if you look at the bell graph of the cases, we are on a downward slant statewide and also countywide. So that's promising. Hospitalizations have decreased as well. I know at one point in time, we were really high capacity with our COVID cases here at Carolina East, and they have subsided a bit. Still have people in there, they're still working every day with the COVID unit. And then, Mr. White asked me to speak to the vaccine because everybody wants to know when it's going to be available and when can they get their shot. And what occurred was, we were ramping up local capacity, as were a lot of counties across the state, and I think everybody did a really good job because evidently, we cleared what was on the shelves, so to speak, in the state. At the time, we didn't realize it was just a bolus of what was held back, and I guess we were under the impression that that was going to be the new norm, the amount of vaccine we got, because I'd say, we got a little shy of three thousand in one week, which was a lot for us. We hadn't received that many at one time. And we worked with Carolina East and CCHC in tandem. We've been sharing and transferring vaccine and each holding different clinics. We have now moved from the Health Department out to the Riverfront Convention Center, a lot better parking, a lot more space to operate in. It's a, I can't imagine a better location to do that type of a clinic. And we've gotten it to the point where there's no wait, no line, in probably less than twenty minutes, you're in and out, you're registered, you have your shot, you're scheduled for your follow-up appointment. And the bulk of that time, honestly, is spent waiting after you get your vaccination, to make sure there's no adverse reactions, which there have not been with either the Pfizer or the Moderna product that we've seen. So, we ramped up productivity, and then, the following week, the allotments across the state were cut, and I think that, well, we know now that most of them were just diverted to some larger scale mass clinics in other parts of the state. And then after that, the state came back with what I think is an improved plan, where they gave us a baseline amount of new doses. Now, I don't want anybody to worry about the second doses. They have been coming, as they should. Every first dose has a second dose match, and those have been coming steadily. So, there's no issues with that. The first dose allotments for the next three weeks for Carolina East, four hundred. They were accustomed to getting at least nine hundred and seventy-five Pfizer, now they're getting four hundred Moderna. We, at the Health Department, are getting an allotment of five hundred a week for the next three weeks baseline. That's new doses. We'll also receive second doses as well. Then, there's a satellite site of Goshen Medical Center, their baseline allotment is one hundred. They are actually moving from one office location to another, so they are unable to really do vaccinations now, so they transferred two hundred of their doses to the Health Department, and we'll put those to use. And what we're doing is basically, within a week's time, we can move this vaccine really, if we really wanted to, we could move over four hundred doses down at the Convention Center. Our ability is just hindered a bit by the amount of vaccine that we get. Now, as far as being called, contacted, or how do you get an appointment? With CCHC or Carolina East, they're still calling patients, because there's such a small amount of vaccine and such a high demand. With the Health Department, we have a call center that's open five days a week from eight-thirty to four-thirty, and then we also have online scheduling, and I know that that goes quickly. For instance, we had close to seven hundred appointments posted this morning. goes quickly. For instance, we had close to 700 appointments posted this morning, and within less than two hours between the phone center and the online registration, they were gone. And after speaking with my staff, once they get down to about 100 available appointments online, then they take it down from the online registration because at that point, there's probably 40 or 50 people in the system that are going to find an appointment somewhere, and then they fill in the rest of it with calls from the phone center. And people ask, can I get put on a waiting list? But waiting lists are really not practical in this situation because, for instance, we requested 5,000 vaccine for the week. We wound up getting, with first and second dose, about 1,200 for the week. So, we're getting, excuse me, 1,100 or 1,200 is what we got. I can't remember the exact amount of second doses right off the top of my head. So, we're getting about a little over 20% of what we request right now. And therein lies the problem. There's only so many appointments, and the people who have the appointments and come through the system, whether it be at Carolina East, CCHC, or at the Riverfront Convention Center, I think have been well satisfied with the process. The people who cannot seem to get in for an appointment are very frustrated, and we do understand that.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Yes. Considering that marginalized communities are having limited access, and if we have to wait until you call us, how can we change that so that more people from the black and brown communities get the vaccine? Because we tend to have greater loss when we get the COVID. And somehow, I think it's not maybe understanding the process, knowing how to go through the process, but we need to find a way that we can include more individuals.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, we've talked about different ways of doing that because as soon as, as soon as these appointments are put up, placed online in that call center, so they go quick. 700 and go in less than two hours. So, I think in order to get at that issue, we probably need to work with some folks within the community, especially for people who they know are just, you know, not able to navigate the system to get those appointments. And then, throughout the community, maybe we can allot so many every week or something like that.
I was, I was considering doing that, but after you said, after your statement earlier, I determined that perhaps that was not a good idea. But if that is true, I'll be happy to work with the community, with people that I feel that need access, don't know how, or having some problems. And I know it won't, I won't reach everyone, but if I work with you, if you allow me to, I'll be happy to do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, we've, and the issue I think at hand now is that there's just so, so much demand for such a little product, you know, across the board.
All right. I won't, I won't hold, I won't keep it going, but I'd like to talk with you later so that we can get together and see if we can work out something.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? The Vice Chair?
Scott, one, we've had a number of, all of us, I'm sure, have had a number of people contact us saying, you know, what can I do? I don't know how to get this done, the very thing Ms. Smith was just talking about. We really are, I guess, just so the public understands, we're at the mercy of the state. The state is going to tell us what we get, and there's nothing much we can do other than we can ask for more.
Yes, sir.
But realistically, there's no way we can force them to give us more vaccine. They're, they're putting a ton of it into the big cities, as I understand, with some of their big centers, like at the Convention Center in Greenville and in Raleigh and in Charlotte. So, a big chunk of what's coming into the state of North Carolina is going to those areas.
Yes, sir.
And all we can do is keep reminding our Governor and our Health Secretary of Health and Human Services that we want more. And I know you've done that. I know you've been frustrated. Do you have any suggestions for what we can do or what the public can do to change that?
Yes, sir. There's good questions, good points for some things I need to, you lead me right into the next topic about how the state makes their decisions. So, they've got a 16%, and they're really held at the mercy of the federal government, or how much comes to the state. Right now, we're getting about 120,000 doses a week for the entire state, which probably equates to about 1% of the state's population. So, not very much. We hear that in the very near future, within the next week or so, we're supposed to be receiving probably a 16% increase. Or, so, that'll be several thousand more doses to go out across the state. And it seems that the deciding factors on what the state has put out to us was, okay, you have to enter your, your individuals into the COVID vaccine management system, and you have to get rid of the vaccine pretty much within a week's time of receipt. So, we've been able to do that. So, we've cleared those hurdles. The next things are percent of 65 and older in a county, and we are slightly, have a slight larger population, percentage of our population than the state does. And then, there's also, what percentage of the 65 and older population is minority? That's another factor that they're looking at. And I think above and beyond that, there's, there's just not a whole lot that we can do, other than show them we are efficient, and we've done that.
Commissioner Mitchell, and then Commissioner McCabe?
This ties into what you just said, and also to Mr. Smith's comments. I had heard through the grapevine that North Carolina was going to change their distribution systems and it was more based on demographics. For example, we're a retirement area. We have a larger percentage of older citizens across all demographics than, say, for example, Wilmington, which is a younger community. Is, was what I heard through the grapevine correct? If it was correct, when is that supposed to go into effect?
That, those are the rules now, because we have our baseline for the next three weeks, and we're waiting on what additional. So, we haven't gotten that information yet, so we'll see where our statistics get us, where we land on their, on their rubric scale. Probably, I'm hoping to hear something this week about some possible additional vaccine. And I know, like Carolina East and CCHC really are, because they, like, their normal was 975, and now it's down to 400. So, we're actually getting less vaccine now than before our surge shipment came in, the way it stands as it is now. So, anybody's, your guess is as good as mine as to, as to how much we're going to get in the coming weeks, though.
Well, one of my concerns is, you know, they designated Greenville as a mass vaccine site. Well, that's great if you could drive, but that's an hour away. It's not the greatest road, and a number of our citizens here either don't have transportation or are no longer drivable. Is there any way that we could also be designated as a quote-unquote "mass vaccination" site? Is that possibly in the cards?
That's what we threw out, the 5,000, because we had heard through the grapevine that, I think, they're, they were going to try to do like a 5,000 a week through that center. And we said, well, with our local collaborative, we can't do that.
You can do that.
We can. And I think now, as much capacity as we may have, it's, well, we are, we are also getting to the point, because at first, we got 100 or 200 doses for the week, okay? But now, we're seeing, like, last week, we gave, over four days, we gave 1,200 doses. It was a mixture of first and second, but now, we're going to see heavier days with the second-dose people. And then, you know, if we can get more than 1,100 new doses coming in for the community, plus all of the second doses, we'll be busier. But it's definitely going to take longer. And another factor, too, is the approval of the Johnson &amp; Johnson one-dose. Now, if that comes onto the market, and you have that third product out there for us, and it's only one shot, that would be wonderful, if we could get some of that as well. And now, it seems like Moderna is more prevalent than the Pfizer. So, even the hospital, everybody's getting Moderna.
Yes, Scott, I know you have your hands full, but I am in the same situation that Commissioner is in, and he's in. Down in the hollow area, I have a lot of same citizens and all the people here approach me about having a site down at the Community Center.
Yes, sir.
So that we get the vaccination in that area, because from Adam Creek, New Bern is over 40 miles to here. And a lot of people don't have that type of transportation. So, I appreciate very much, if you can, work with the county, some kind of way that we can set up a site down in the Community Center in the future, if we can get these people vaccinated down in the area.
Okay. Yes, sir. There's, you're right. That is a long haul from the southern end of the county to get up to the Convention Center. And I'm sure that a lot of those folks have not been able to take advantage and get up here and get the vaccine yet.
Yeah, especially in the winter time. It's cold, and a lot of people can get out. So, I know your hands are full with everything else, but if you could help us, it'd be so significant that, you know, it's possible it can happen.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Mark, do you have any questions for the Health Director?
Yeah, he mentioned the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Is that, the time on that is not as much, I guess it's not time, but as far as in Pfizer, it's 95%. Where Johnson &amp; Johnson is a lot less, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, sir. I've seen the mid-60 range as far as efficacy.
Yeah. Okay. I just wanted to check on that. I thought so.
Any other questions from the Commissioners? Vice Chair?
Not a question, but Scott, I, I want to tell you that I've gotten a number of people who have been very, very complimentary of how smoothly it has gone when they, when they do get the opportunity to get an appointment and get in, get their, their vaccination. So, to your people and to you, congratulations for really figuring out how to get it done and get it done smoothly. That's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Booker. And as, as you being the representative on our Board of Health, you know those ladies and those people that have set it up, and they're very organized. Jennifer Blackman, Jennifer King, Amber Tabarini, the whole team over there, they're, they've done a great job.
Thank you.
Scott, we, on behalf of the Board, we thank you again for all you're doing and for your staff. I know it's around-the-clock work that you have, and y'all giving it to you all, and we thank you. I would like to ask, you know, I think there is interest in, in learning more about how we go forward in the process, Mr. County Manager. And so, maybe this week at some point, we might be able to get together and have a conversation, and then we can reach out to some of the Commissioners that have voiced some concerns here today, and just kind of see if we can come up with a plan and work with you.
Well, and maybe the only way that we really do get any additional doses is to come up with something for the historically marginalized populations, and, you know, maybe if we can put something special together for them and may garner us some extra doses just for that.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
No, sir. I would just, I would echo what Scott just said. I think, looking at the data I saw this morning, I shared some of it, or you shared with me, I can't remember, but you're going to have to have two paths, your normal path, and then the equity path. And you've got to figure out how you can adjust both to get the maximum number of doses. So, Scott, I'll call you and see if I can get something scheduled.
Commissioners, we will work on that this week. And so, thank you again for being here. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Tax Department, a report of the unpaid 2020 taxes and tax lien advertisement date. Mr. Ronnie Antri, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Members of the Board, Commissioners, as you know, each time this year, I'm required to report to you the amount of unpaid taxes for 2020 that are a lien on real property. And for this year, that number is $1,999,668.64. That figure yields a current collection percentage of 95.08, which is up from last year. Last year's percentage was 94.89. So, we have less uncollected tax at this same time this year than we did last. That's a good thing.
Mr. Antri, could you say that number one more time, sir?
Yes, I can. It's $1,999,668.64.
Mr. Antri, if you don't mind, we have a new Commissioner here with us, and just go briefly, once it's advertised, and the process after that, if you will.
Yes. Well, part of what I ask the Board to do at this time is to authorize me, as the statute also requires, to advertise the liens in the newspaper, in a paper of general circulation in the county, which in Craven County is the Sun Journal. So, I've asked the Board to advertise those liens on April 12th of this year. That's, that's when the delinquent tax list, the unpaid taxes on real property, will be advertised, which is the first step in the foreclosure process.
All right. Commissioner Smith?
What percentage of this do you really collect?
Well, by June 30th, we collect close to 99%. When we closed out June 30th of last year, we had collected 98.85% of levy. So, it does increase each month.
Other questions for Mr. Antri? Hear none. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, too.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll on this, please.
Sure.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ronnie. Appreciate what you did.
Thank you.
Next item is on the Finance Department, budget amendment for the City of New Bern Utilities. Mr. Craig Warren. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I have one item on the agenda for you tonight, and that is a budget amendment for the City of New Bern Utilities. Recently, the county was notified by the City of New Bern Utilities Department that multiple billing errors have been discovered across several county utility accounts, resulting in incorrect consumption and unbilled electricity usage amounting approximately $69,064. According to the city's utility department, these billing errors date back to August 2019, and consist of multiple key errors on meter reads and the application of an incorrect multiplier at the Human Services Complex. The departments most impacted by these errors were Health, DSS, and most recently Parks and Recreation, when they were notified in December of additional billing errors associated with lighting at Creekside Park. The city's customer service policy allows for the repayment of the unbilled utility usage over the course of 12 months. Our staff thought it would be better to elect to resolve this in the current fiscal year, rather than to let it roll into next fiscal year. Now that the current bills have been adjusted to reflect both the unbilled usage and the corrected multiplier, a budget shortfall of $203,500 is projected in the utility budgets of DSS, Health, and Parks and Recreation Departments. With the DSS portion reimbursable by the state at 50%, and the actual revenues coming in higher than anticipated at our Health Department, staff proposes that the following budget amendment increasing budgeted revenues in Health, DSS, and appropriating additional fund balance of $133,000 to cover the amount needed through the remainder of the fiscal year.
All right. You've heard the requests or the questions from the Board. Commissioner Liner?
You know, this is BS. Really, really teeks me off. I mean, 18 months of errors, and we're supposed errors, and we're supposed to eat it without any questions? I mean, I would, I just can't believe this, that we're going to allow this to come forward. I mean, what documentations have they showed you? What documentations have they showed to where they've made this mistake? And where did they increase the funding? And I'd like to see what other facilities have had these errors. Are we the only ones? Do we have other businesses out there that they've done this to?
Answer to that is yes.
Well, we haven't seen it.
Well, I just happen to know a business in town that got a bill, a back bill similar to what we're looking at here, that when he got it, he said he about had a heart attack because he said, there's no way I can pay it. And, you know, they spread it out over a year or whatever for him. I guess that's their practice, right, Craig?
Yes, according to their policy.
But I mean, we're taking this on face value.
I don't know how many others there are, Commissioner, but I do know of one for sure because he made me aware of it.
Well, I think we need to know. What other people are being screwed? And I put that out there, you know, this just seems wrong. Without knowing all of the facts of how this transpired, how a department could get away with eighteen months, they've had to have an audit during that timeframe. And it's never been called by anybody?
You want me to take a shot? So I talked to the city manager, we told you about this at your work session, December 7th.
Yes.
Briefed you. So I talked to the city manager and two things. One is, you're exactly right. We are not the only one. And he said, matter of fact, we weren't close to being the largest. So not that that made me feel any better, I guess it made that we weren't being looked at in a vacuum. The second thing, I talked to him a little bit about the problem with the public entity of going back this far, meaning we're paying for things in arrears for something that happened in the last fiscal year, right? Twelve months ago, we were in a different fiscal year. Why in the world are you looking back twelve months? And his response to me was, we could look back further. So, you know, I mean, I didn't get the sense there was any inkling to work with us on this. I mean, I think they've got so many of these that they're having to treat everybody equally, which I certainly understand. But I did share with him the burden this place is on the county, that we're sitting here mid-year in a budget and we got to find two-hundred-and-three thousand dollars to get through the year. That doesn't count for what we've got to budget and put in the budget next year. We know we're starting two-hundred-and-three thousand behind from what we budgeted. So it's a problem. He referenced other large things like the hospital, I believe he stated the schools. I did check with Dr. Doyle. She didn't know of anything specific on that. He named off a couple other facilities that had the same issue.
Well, I'm not looking for any favoritism. I'm not looking for anything for us. I think for across the board, for everybody. Why you go back this far for a mistake you made?
Well, sir.
You made. These people paid on good faith on what the city told them they owed.
As far as I'm aware, and I hope, Craig, I shared this correct with the city manager, that if we made some type of mistake like this in our water system, we wouldn't look back.
We would not go back if we made the mistake.
No. We would correct it and move forward, and yet, yes, you'd have to pay a higher rate, but we wouldn't look back twelve months.
Well, I don't think any sane business is going to go that far back and everything else. I mean, you know, this is the board's call. I'm not voting for it.
So a couple additional details that I'd found out a little bit later over just some discussions with the Utilities Department is that there were two defective transformers, I guess they call them CTs, that went out in August 2019. So they replaced those CTs. And for something happened in the system, they said, is that the multiplier of what used to be two-hundred-and-eighty-eight multiplier was adjusted to one-twenty by mistake. So that is about, that is the difference of what we're now seeing, is that they've added that multiplier back at the higher level. And so our monthly bill was averaging at Human Services Complex around three thousand dollars, and now it is at nine thousand. So that's about a six thousand dollar a month increase. The monthly bill at our Parks and Rec was averaging about four and a half thousand dollars per month, and that went up to nine-point-six or nine, nine thousand, six hundred. So roughly about a five thousand increase.
You know, this is for the remainder of this year. What's this do to us for next year's budget? Half a million dollars?
Well, it means you start that far in the hole. We're going to have to see what the new bill averages are, and we'll have to, we'll have to figure out new utility rates, but it's not going to be the same as what you budgeted this year. So based on what we know, if you're putting two-hundred-and-three thousand in now, you're more than likely going to put it in in July. Or, you know, Craig, we don't know if there's other accounts that...
At least about a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand additional. We know that the sixty-nine thousand is just back billings, but...
Correct. That's correct. But you also know you didn't, your only budget is six months moving forward, so you got to go six months back to get the full year at the current multiplier.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Well, number one, this does not inspire confidence in City of New Bern Government Electric Billing Department. So I guess I have two questions. All right. Number one, have they ever gone back to see if people overpaid and returned the monies to them? And number two, eighteen months ago, we were sitting fat, dub, and happy, assuming we were billed correctly. How do we know that they have quote-unquote "fixed the problem" and that we are being billed correctly now? I'd sure like to see some proof positive that they have fixed the issue, because if they haven't, I don't want to be doing this a year and a half down the road.
They surely didn't talk to me about overpayment, but I did ask them.
They didn't.
They did. But I did ask them to kind of take a look at all of our accounts because we want to ensure that we are paying the right rate on all of them, because we don't like to be hit with surprises.
Commissioner Smith?
If I'm understanding what you're saying, that a transformer went out and they calibrated it incorrectly when they fixed it, what was the payment before the transformer went out? I wonder how, if we're looking at how it went up, what happened before the transformer went out? I'd like to know if the price dropped when they recalibrated the transformer. Oh, you understand where I am?
Mm-hmm.
Because if it was calibrated wrong and caused the price to be less than they were paying ordinarily, for example, if you paid, say, six thousand dollars from April until, say, June, then the transformer went out and the price dropped to four thousand dollars, and I can see that. But if the price was comparatively same to that point, I'm questioning why the transformer's making that difference.
Yeah. I didn't go back and look that far back in history, but what I did see is that in 2019, because they had Electric Cities do an analysis, because we just weren't going to take their word for it, and we kind of wanted them to send us some more data. And so I passed it on to our maintenance department, had them also look at it. And what we could tell is that that multiplier was the biggest thing causing that change in the consumption, which then in turn increased the bill. And so, like I said, it took, it was averaging three thousand a month over at the Human Services Complex, and it, once that multiplier was reapplied at the higher level, it was averaging nine.
Can we do a little bit more research in this before we decide upon this?
I don't think that it's going to change. It is what it is right now.
Do we have to pay for this?
I believe so.
If we get their service.
Commissioner Mark, do you have any questions?
No. I remember this when it came up originally. It's, I would agree with what George is saying. And they should show us why it happened and how it happened and how they're going to correct it.
I think one of the things that we do need to go ahead and put out a disclaimer and a warning about is because of the increase that we're seeing at Parks and Rec, come budget time, commissioners, we will possibly have to increase the fees that we charge for the use of the facilities there and for lighting. We, you know, we all already get calls from different leagues that are out there and that are struggling financially. And by what I just heard you say, that it was forty-five hundred dollars a month, and now it's ninety-six hundred dollars out there?
That's at the Park and Recreation.
So that's, you know...
Which there is no offsetting revenue other than the fees that we charge for the use of the parks.
So that's double. And so unless, you know, we're going to take and subsidize it, you know, we're going to have to take a look at that going forward. And so I just say that as a disclaimer to those that may be listening tonight, you know, as we have budget discussions, it's not something that we want to do, but it's something that, you know, it's been forced upon us to do. So, all right.
Do we know Lawson Creek, do they have lights and stuff out there?
At Lawson Creek Park?
Yeah.
Sir, I don't believe they do. Commissioner Mitchell, do you remember, there's lights at Lawson Creek?
I think they do have lights out there.
Maybe that one field?
As long as I've been anywhere, I don't know.
I don't.
You know? Okay. All right. What's the desire of the board?
Do we have an option? I'm sorry.
Let me, yeah, I'll take that one. You do have an option. You can say no, but the problem you're going to have is your utility account numbers are going to go to zero, and you're going to be out of balance, and you're not going to have any money to pay the bills. So you really, I mean, your option is to put the money there because the bill is, the multipliers are going to be what the multipliers are. And we're already in Parks and Rec, I believe, with a couple bills, we're going to blow the budget. And remember one thing, this year, I might have mentioned this to the chairman, because the leagues, because of COVID, went longer into the fall, we use lights a whole lot more than we normally would. I mean, we were playing baseball in November this year, which we don't, you don't ever do that. So I think you're, it's either do it now, or we're going to be back in a month without money in the budget, not able to pay the bills.
What happens if we don't pay the bill?
They cut you off.
Cut you off.
Do the lights stay on all the time? A certain time goes off?
That's when there's activity at the fields.
Commissioner Liner?
If we decided, this board decides it, instead of paying, we give you the money, we put the money in the budget, but we only pay it monthly. We don't give them one lump sum of money.
Over twelve months?
Over twelve months. I mean, is there any interest or anything charged or anything?
No interest.
Okay. I, this eats at me.
Even be paid, but...
We pay, but we give them twelve, over twelve months, we just give them monthly payments.
Can you look at that?
On the sixty-nine thousand.
On whatever we owe them.
Because the sixty-nine is in arrears. So we'd have to add that to our monthly bill for six and then have six in next year's budget.
So I was kind of anticipating us kind of getting it out of the way in this fiscal year. That way it didn't affect us on our budget.
No, but it sure makes them whole.
Right.
It does.
I'd rather not solve their problems all in one fell swoop. We can budget the money and pay it off, which is what this says, but then pay it off over twelve months and let them stretch their nickels like we're going to have to. I like that.
I just thought about it.
All right. I need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I suck it in.
What's the motion?
That we authorize the funding in the budget for what they're asking for, but we pay it off over a twelve-month period.
I have a second?
Second.
I suck it in.
All right. Staff, do y'all understand?
Yes, sir.
Is it going to work?
Yeah.
All right. Discussion. I'm hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. All right. Next is appointments. First, we have our list of pending. Do we have any commissioners that have any nominees or any pending appointments? Commissioner Liner?
Chair, if possible, the Aging Planning Board, you don't have in your packages, but I have two applications for those two seats that are available. I have a Ms. Anita Maria Douglas and a Lauren Stevens Gardner. I will fill the seats of the sixty years and older group, if I could put those in nomination.
All right. Commissioners, do we have any objection of accepting the nomination and attending to it tonight, or would you rather to wait till our next meeting? Or are you good to proceed?
I'm good proceeding.
Proceed.
All right. Here, do I have any other nominations? It's been on our list for some time, so if it's all right, we will accept it by acclamation. Thank you, Commissioner Liner, for helping us to get that one off. Appreciate that. And you see the other list of pending appointments there. All commissioners, please take note of that. And if you will, continue to please help us in filling these seats. Under current, tonight, we have Fire Tax Commissioners, Mr. Alan Gaskins from Township One Vanceboro, Mr. Chris Wetherington from Township Two Little Swift Creek, Martin Hernandez from Township Six, and Mr. Dallas Brown from Township Eight West New Bern. I just will tell you that I did make contact with the Fire Chiefs of Vanceboro, Little Swift Creek, and of West New Bern and their presidents, and they have confirmed that these individuals are willing to serve and that they are in support. I did not follow up with Township Six.
I cannot get up with Martin for Hernandez. So if we could hold this until our next meeting, it'd be appreciated.
Okay. All right. Then we'll hold up on Mr. Hernandez. We'll begin with Alan Gaskins. Commissioner Mark, are you in favor of his reappointment?
Yes.
Okay. We have a nomination. Do I have any others? Here none. It will be accepted by acclamation. Mr. Chris Wetherington from Little Swift Creek, Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
All right. Any other nominations? He will be accepted by acclamation. And Mr. Dallas Brown?
I nominate him, please.
Okay. We have that nomination. We hear any others? Here none. He will be accepted by acclamation. Next is the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. You have Mr. Theron McKay from Harlow and Mr. Carl Jarman from Township Nine. I would ask that both of these individuals be reappointed if the board will so agree.
You sure you want to renominate them, sir?
Yes. Do I have any other nominations?
No.
Here none. They will be accepted. All right. You see your upcoming terms expiring in February or March. Fire Tax Commissioners, Highway Seventy Quarter Committee, and the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees, please take note of those. If they're in your district, I would ask you to please reach out to them and discuss it with them. Any other nominations or appointments come up tonight? Here none. We will move to County Attorney's Report. Mr. Eric Grady. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have one item for your consideration this evening. It is an initial offer to purchase county-owned real estate. The county acquired this parcel through a tax foreclosure some years ago. The property is located on Sandhill Road out in Dover with a parcel ID number of three oh five eight oh seven one. The offer is for one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The taxes that were originally foreclosed upon and the cost of that proceeding were two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and thirty-nine cents, and the current tax value of the property is two thousand, seven hundred dollars, as the board is familiar with. If you accept this contract, we'll put it out for the upset bid process, and it'll be back before the board for final consideration in a couple of meetings. And we do recommend that the board accept this offer and put it out for upset bids.
I'm moved.
Okay.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Here none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Next item is the petition of citizens on a general topic.
We have none.
The vice chair says we have none. Next will be the County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, pleased to be here with you tonight. Sorry, got a little disorganized on the walk up. Mr. Warren, if you'd like to, let's go ahead and handle this first. Pleased to present to you tonight the annual, comprehensive annual financial report for Craven County, fiscal year ending June 30, 2020. We are very happy to put 2020 behind us. This is the last piece of financial accounting that has to go forward. The reason we give it to you tonight is we give it to you two weeks in advance of the presentation from the
of the presentation from the auditor, which will be at your next meeting. So this document is a bit laborious to read, so we're giving it to you well ahead. If you can develop your questions, they will be here to make a presentation. I will steal their thunder and tell you, I'm really proud of Craig and the finance team for, again, producing a clean audit, met all the standards set forth by the LGC in the state of North Carolina. So Craig, thank you for your hard work, you and your team downstairs. So without that, I'll just, I'll pause on that one till next week, our next meeting. And I'm gonna pick up on a couple items we had pending.
Mr. County Manager, if I may, just, I would ask the board to make sure you read all of it, but go to page seventeen when you go home, just make note of that, and just take note of page seventeen of the, of our beginning fund balance and our ending fund balance. I think that speaks volumes. There was only five thousand three hundred and ninety-two dollars difference through the whole year, and I think that tells you what kind of staff we have here in Craven County.
We usually call it hand grenades and horseshoes, but we got pretty close this year. Five thousand dollars and a hundred million dollar budget's pretty.
Pretty good.
Yep.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, but.
Thank you. Couple things to update on. I, just before the meeting, and I want to apologize for not having read it more clearly, but we have received correspondence back from the State Attorney General's Office, which I will share with each of the commissioners in reference to our letter to him regarding Sudden Link. I'm gonna just turn to that letter real quick. I'm gonna just read you a section. I'm gonna skip all the pleasantries, but basically it says, "The North Carolina Department of Justice is authorized by statute to investigate unfair and/or deceptive business practices in or affecting commerce in North Carolina, and to take appropriate legal action to remedy such practices. Based on concerns raised by North Carolina consumers regarding Sudden Link, we request an urgent meeting to discuss these matters. Prior to the meeting, please review your records to identify complaints that Sudden Link has received from consumers in North Carolina concerning issues similar to those raised in the attached letters, which are course from towns, cities, and counties in eastern North Carolina. We would like to discuss the volume and general nature of these complaints and the steps Sudden Link has taken to address those complaints. We are interested in hearing about the age and condition of the equipment and infrastructure that serves these towns and cities, and the steps Sudden Link is taking to actively monitor and address capacity issues on its network. Please ensure that a person who can communicate with our office about these concerns responds within seven days of the date of this letter to coordinate a mutually agreeable time to meet." That's, that's sort of the meat and potatoes of it. I think that was exactly the intent of what this board decided when you asked for this letter to be written. I was quite frankly surprised at the quickness that the Attorney General took in. I think it's a good thing. I will tell you, we've continued to have good conversations with Sudden Link, as you're aware. I mentioned last time, Vice Chair Booker and Chair Jones met with myself and one of the vice presidents. We're continuing to have communication. If you would continue, when you get complaints from citizens, ask them to put that either in an email or a letter to my office so we can keep those in a file, and I can also send a copy to Sudden Link so they can address it. Okay, I mentioned, I believe at the last meeting, that we were probably gonna be in need of another work session. Just while I have you here as a captive audience tonight, I'd like to check your calendars for March fifteenth. That would be the third Monday in March, and it would be immediately following your regular county commissioner meeting.
What time?
Normally about ten thirty. I think ten thirty to two thirty. I don't think it'll be a crazy one like we had back in December. I think just a couple hours. And just a couple things, you're good, Commissioner Booker? Okay. Couple things to talk about, revow. That'll be a time we'll need to kind of hear from Mr. Antry about where we're going. Gene, you and I were talking about a project, Havelock project that you'll need to, to address, and just some other small things going into budget just to get wrapped up.
So this is a full day or half?
I would say ten thirty to two thirty. That works for the commissioner's schedule. We'll have lunch here.
Okay.
Yeah, McCabe will be here.
Of course, I think everybody will be here.
Oh, they got lunch, she'll be here.
I'll bring my own.
All right, everybody good with that? Okay. All right, I think we.
I have one in my purse.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's, that's everything I had.
I may ask you before you sit down?
Yes, sir.
Could you give us an update on the reentry program? I know we, as the Board of Commissioners, invested twenty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money into this program at the end of last year, and I've heard some conversations, and I don't know if you have been updated on some things, but maybe bring us up to date on.
I can, thank, thank you for asking that. Yes, we did spend twenty thousand dollars. If you remember, I came back in November. There was some untimeliness of an RFP coming from the state so that someone could take the administrative control of the reentry council. Based on my conversations back in November, the COG, who had been the administrative agent of their grant, which funds the reentry council, had decided they no longer wanted to participate in that program. It was viewed that the college where Mr. Singleton's employed and most of the work of the council happens would be the next group to take on the grant. At the time, I was made aware that it was days away from the RFP being issued, and when it got issued, it'd be a month, and everything would be done by January first. Last week, I heard the RFP had just dropped, so January twenty-something. RFP that was supposed to drop just a couple days after in November dropped. So they're now believing that by March first, the college can respond to the RFP. They can become the fiscal agent of the grant. They'll manage the staff and move forward into happiness. The, the challenge, Mr. Chair, I, I did speak with a board member from the reentry council today. They still have a funding gap between last week, when we made the last payment, and March first, and we are, we've exhausted all the revenue the board put forward at that time. So we're ten thousand dollars short. There's gonna be a delta in between.
So what was, if, so what I'm hearing is, well, let me ask it this way. Are there any funds from the college that they have that they can put towards this?
I spoke with Dr. Stats. They do not have anything they can put forward. He did a deep scrub with his finance staff and with some of his deans that are involved with this. They could find no money to assist in this issue.
So the result then would be that there would be no active reentry program? Is it already stopped? I mean, have they already?
It's, it's on the verge of having to slow down drastically.
They could not restart until March second?
Correct. And the problem is, what they do now, the way the grant is, you can't pay yourself back. It's only moving forward from the day you sign the contract. So anything in this delta, it's done.
Commissioner Lynam?
Mr. Chair, we've been, we've been fortunate in this program that was set up years ago, where we really had no skin in the game for this. The state has come up with all of the money, and for us to sit here having twenty thousand already invested, knowing that you're gonna have to lay off those staff and the reentry people that's going through it, I mean, the numbers are not great, they're not bad for having a new one. I think we're still better than anybody in the state on running a reentry program. So I would, I would make a motion that we authorize the ten thousand dollars and move forward. And think about it, budget time, we may want to have skin in the game to where we got ownership of this, other than passing it.
I'll second that motion.
All right, you have a motion and a second for ten thousand dollars?
Ten thousand.
For the reentry program to carry on through the first of March. Discussion.
Sir, just to make sure I'm clear, I, I want to grab my notes. We would still use the COG in the interim, since they're already set up with the payroll and everything to pay the individuals. So we would take the money. They would tell us what that payroll is. We would release those funds only for that payroll till they get their, their grant or March first happens.
But, Chairman, what happened after the March?
State's grant comes forward.
They get a, I believe it's a two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
We can cover them for until, until, until March, okay?
You gotta cover this interim period.
Otherwise, the program goes away.
It'd be just easy. Well, okay.
This was something that former Commissioner Sampson, Champion, worked hard on him, and former Commissioner Dacey. They spent a lot of time in it, and I think.
Good idea.
The prior board and this board has shown support of this, this cause, and I, I think this is the right thing to do to make sure it continues. So any other discussion? Here none, we have a motion and a second to give to the reentry program to be administered through the COG through March the fourth, first of ten thousand dollars. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lynam?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, George.
All right, does any of the other commissioners have any questions for the county manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners.
Thank you, I appreciate your report.
Yes, sir.
All right, commissioners' report. Commissioner Mark, we'll let you go first.
Uh, I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
I'll take this off so that I can talk a little bit better. Number one, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who expressed their condolences on the death of my father and who were so supportive when my whole family was down with COVID. So thank you very much. I appreciate my friendships here very much. Start off, the traveling Vietnam wall will be in New Bern at Lawson's Creek Park April sixth through eleventh. This was originally scheduled for this fall. It was canceled during COVID. It is back on the books, so April sixth through eleventh. Second, the ribbon cutting for the law enforcement simulator at the Volt Center will be under the auspices of Craven Community College. The ribbon cutting for that is the ninth of March at two o'clock. So please put that on your calendar. It is a significant step forward to enhance the conflict resolution capabilities of our local law enforcement agencies to make a safer and better prepared and better for our citizens and communities law enforcement capability. Third, Senator Tellis has just announced that there will be a hundred and three million grant, a hundred and two point nine 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 million dollar grant from FEMA to the North Carolina Emergency Management Agency to aid in the distribution and vaccination for COVID. So this is just been announced today. And last one, I would like to ask the commissioners to think about adding an item to the agenda for the March working session, and this would be on current prohibition about all two axle vehicles going to our convenience sites. Right now, we have an ironclad rule, no two axle vehicles. This is a significant inconvenience to some of our citizens who have one trailer. It's a big one, and can they, and they can't use it at the convenience site. So I'd like to open it up to the county to come back with perhaps some more flexible options, and if the commissioners agree, put it on the agenda for March.
All right, just for clarification, you want that at the first meeting in March or the, at the work session?
At the working session.
At the work session, all right.
The Vietnam, what time is this starts?
I don't know. They'll bring it in on a calvicate, and they'll set it up, and.
Fine, Mr. Then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell, and we do extend our continued prayers to you and your family.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynam?
Sir, I have a couple of things. If you would, get one of these. These is, this is a PowerPoint that was presented when we went through our workshop at Trillium last week on the twenty-sixth. I've asked Dave Peterson through the chair, I mean, through the manager, to bring him forward here at our next meeting in the morning, and it's gonna be about a one-hour session. So I think we put him on the, the end of the day to, to do that. And I think it's important for all of us to be able to understand the Medicaid transformation is coming about. It's happening. It's gonna go live next year. There's a lot of stuff in there. There's a lot of information in there. My concern is, and what scares me to death, is we're gonna lose a lot of people in this system. I mean, it's so much garbage of what's going on and what's happening. We went through this last year, if you recall. The Health Department went through, registered people, not the regi, you know, the Health Department didn't, but they brought in the insurance company who had the contracts, registered these people. Then the state fell through and they dropped it. Supposedly, they've gotten a word out. If you registered it last year, it's no longer valid. You gotta reregister. You gotta come through. But the people they're dealing with are the handicapped, the mentally retarded, and mental issues. So they're not gonna understand it. Their caregivers, sure, they should be getting there. It just concerns me, we're, Trillium is going to take over the worst part of this. They're gonna take over the high critical mental cases, from cradle to grave. Before, it was only the mental health part of this. Now, it's the whole health. So, whole health, everything. Doctors' appointments, everything. They even, they have to have contracts with every pharmacy. They have to have contracts with every provider. There's gonna be five different call centers for people to call. Transportation, appointments, medicine. It's just, it's just unbelievable, and I think we all need to hear what's going on because of our community and the age group that we have in here, and we have a good number of patients in Trillium from this area. So I've invited him, talking to the manager to bring him in. He was due to come in here anyway to give us our annual report. We're just gonna add this to it, but like I say, it's gonna be about an hour. I thank each and every one of you for submitting your ten priorities. I think you see in the email that came out on Friday, they cut that to five priorities. And if you looked at it, we had, I think, three of the top five priorities that we generated as our number ten made up those priorities. So we were in line with the rest of the state on what the priorities are. So I thank each and every one of y'all for setting that up. And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's it, sir.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Well, it was my intent to appeal to, to my district to accept taking the COVID vaccine because it's so important to our community and its lack in there, but considering that we don't know right now how the process is going to work, I'm going to wait and talk more with Scott before I make that appeal. I, I do say to, to all of you and to, and to all of our citizens, this is a very important issue, and we all recognize that. But some of our communities are more susceptible to this COVID vaccine, and, and more damage seem to happen to them when it, when it comes. So I want everyone to, to take the vaccine, but I want those people who are vulnerable, some people who are reluctant to take it because of side effects, I want them to know that I have taken the vaccine, the first one. I take the second one tomorrow with little or no side effects. A little bit of a sore arm. I've done research, and I find that nobody, I found nowhere that anyone had died from it, from taking the vaccine, but people are dying every day that are being reluctant. So I'm appealing to everyone, if you have the opportunity to take the vaccine, please do so, and do it as quickly as you can. And I will be getting back with you and people of the community to see what we can do to work that out.
Yes, ma'am. And we will have those discussions this week and, and get back with you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCabe. All right, Mr. McCabe?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything to report, this president won't.
All right, vice chair?
I have nothing, sir.
All right. I don't think I have. I don't think I have anything this evening either, so, Mr. County Manager, anything else you got?
No, sir, thank you.
Here is nothing, do I have a motion we adjourn?
So.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you.